Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be addressed through the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Good day of roll call, please.
Lajowski.
Here.
Jagiello.
Here.
Isabella.
Here.
Foster.
Yeah.
Merk.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Nicklin.
Yeah.
All right. First item on our agenda is the selection of a Planning Commission chairperson and vice-chairman. And I would just like to say, it's been a real pleasure being the chair for the last year. It's been really fun. Pleasure working with all you guys.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, really enjoyed it. So, we need a recommendation for a chairperson and a vice-chairperson.
I can make a nomination for chair, Steve Foster.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Actually, a motion, or is there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Okay, then you can make a motion. Go ahead and make the motion, Commissioner Nicklin.
I'll make a motion to nominate Steve Foster for chair for the Planning Commission 2015.
Mac will second that again, right? Officially?
Second.
All right. Good, no, we gotta roll call.
Oh, roll call.
I don't know.
Be good official.
Lajowski.
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Foster.
Abstain.
Merk.
(laughing).
Nolan.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
All right. Next item is the selection of a vice-chair. So, we are open for nominations if someone would like to nominate someone to be the vice-chair.
I'd like to...
You might as well choose somebody.
Yeah, nominate Kathy Nolan. She's so inclined.
Any other nominations? That was another motion we have to nominate first. Well, now we do a motion. Go ahead and make a motion.
All right.
Make a motion that we appoint Kathy Nolan our vice-chair. I'll second that.
All right. And Korea, roll call on that, please.
Lajowski.
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Abstain.
Nicklin.
Yes.
All right. Now, we have to rearrange all the seating here, so there'll be a short delay. Commissioner Sabia, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public communications is a time we set aside during our Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than those scheduled on agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda under state law other than for emergency items. No action can be taken at this meeting. I have before me no cards. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the Planning Commission? Okay, no one's coming forward, so we'll move on to the consent items. The consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar, considered as a separate item. The first is the minutes of our regular meeting of the Planning Commission from December 3rd, 2014.
I'll move and approve the minutes.
Second. Is that a roll call, or?
Lajowski.
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Abstain.
Okay, now's the time.
Nicklin, I forgot we were gonna differ.
Okay, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts for tonight's agenda items. Mac, you wanna start us off?
I have, I mean, I've been to the property at 206 North Signal in general, but I have had no ex parte communications with anybody regarding this project or the tennis academy.
I've been to the tennis academy, but I have not been to the 206 property and had no ex parte contact.
I've been to the Wild Tennis Academy site as well as 206 North Signal, and I've had no ex parte contact.
I too have visited the Wild Tennis Academy and the North Signal Street project and have not had any ex parte contact.
I also have visited both sites and have not had any ex parte contacts.
I stopped by the Signal Street site this evening on the way over here and did not have any ex parte contacts.
I visited both sites and no ex parte contacts, either of them.
All right. That brings us to our municipal advisory council Planning Commission liaison report. And Terry, introduce yourself.
I made it. I finally made it.
Good to see you.
Yes, I'm Terry Wright with the Intura County Municipal Planning Commission, or council, I should say. And we are supposed to be meeting once a month, but we have very few meetings. But we have had Steve there at our last several meetings anyway, so that's the good news. At our last meeting, we did have one pretty important item on the agenda, and it had to do with a track map to subdivide two pieces of property over in the Oakview area. And one of them was an 86-acre parcel being divided into two 40-acre parcels, and then another 3 1/2 acre or 3.3 acre parcel divided into two 1.6 acre parcels. The map included actual building sites for homes on the smaller properties, but not on the larger properties. And those properties, the 40-acre parcels, are gonna be left as open space. So, that was good news. There was a mitigated negative declaration planned and prepared and given to the county planning division, and they had looked it over and approved it. And so, it was at our council to be reviewed or made comment on it and give the public a chance to provide comments, local public provide comments, and they did. We had quite a few people there, and there were a lot of comments. And I'm glad to say that we did approve the map with all of the changes that came from the public. So, there were six, five or six changes, or not changes per se, but recommendations to the county to add comments from the public. And they ranged everywhere from making sure there was a fence across the property to prevent large animals like horses of going into the wilderness area, if I can call it that, to keep the horses out. And so, that was a good proposal. But the biggest concern was possible flooding area from the Los Encinos area. And so, there was a recommendation put on there that the map will include the statement that surveys must be done to prevent flooding in that area before any work can be done on the property. So, that was a good proposal. It came again from the public comment. So, it went very well, and like I said, we did provide approval from our board to the county Planning Commission with those recommendations. And that's all we did. That was enough. Okay, thank you.
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Terry. Okay, that leads us to our public hearing items. The first item is a continuation of design review permit, DRP 11-05 RV 02, which is a modification to the Wild Tennis Academy Phase 1 and Phase 2. The recommendation is that it be continued to a date certain, which is February 4th, 2015. I'll need a motion to carry this through.
I'll make a motion that we continue design review permit, DRP 11-05 RV 02, a modification to the Wild Tennis Academy Phase 1 and Phase 2 until February 4th.
I'll second that. Commissioner Merk, second that. Roll call?
Lajowski.
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Abstain.
Okay, now's the time.
Nicklin, I forgot we were gonna differ.
Okay, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts for tonight's agenda items. Mac, you wanna start us off?
I have, I mean, I've been to the property at 206 North Signal in general, but I have had no ex parte communications with anybody regarding this project or the tennis academy.
I've been to the tennis academy, but I have not been to the 206 property and had no ex parte contact.
I've been to the Wild Tennis Academy site as well as 206 North Signal, and I've had no ex parte contact.
I too have visited the Wild Tennis Academy and the North Signal Street project and have not had any ex parte contact.
I also have visited both sites and have not had any ex parte contacts.
I stopped by the Signal Street site this evening on the way over here and did not have any ex parte contacts.
I visited both sites and no ex parte contacts, either of them.
All right. That brings us to our municipal advisory council Planning Commission liaison report. And Terry, introduce yourself.
I made it. I finally made it.
Good to see you.
Yes, I'm Terry Wright with the Intura County Municipal Planning Commission, or council, I should say. And we are supposed to be meeting once a month, but we have very few meetings. But we have had Steve there at our last several meetings anyway, so that's the good news. At our last meeting, we did have one pretty important item on the agenda, and it had to do with a track map to subdivide two pieces of property over in the Oakview area. And one of them was an 86-acre parcel being divided into two 40-acre parcels, and then another 3 1/2 acre or 3.3 acre parcel divided into two 1.6 acre parcels. The map included actual building sites for homes on the smaller properties, but not on the larger properties. And those properties, the 40-acre parcels, are gonna be left as open space. So, that was good news. There was a mitigated negative declaration planned and prepared and given to the county planning division, and they had looked it over and approved it. And so, it was at our council to be reviewed or made comment on it and give the public a chance to provide comments, local public provide comments, and they did. We had quite a few people there, and there were a lot of comments. And I'm glad to say that we did approve the map with all of the changes that came from the public. So, there were six, five or six changes, or not changes per se, but recommendations to the county to add comments from the public. And they ranged everywhere from making sure there was a fence across the property to prevent large animals like horses of going into the wilderness area, if I can call it that, to keep the horses out. And so, that was a good proposal. But the biggest concern was possible flooding area from the Los Encinos area. And so, there was a recommendation put on there that the map will include the statement that surveys must be done to prevent flooding in that area before any work can be done on the property. So, that was a good proposal. It came again from the public comment. So, it went very well, and like I said, we did provide approval from our board to the county Planning Commission with those recommendations. And that's all we did. That was enough. Okay, thank you.
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Terry. Okay, that leads us to our public hearing items. The first item is a continuation of design review permit, DRP 11-05 RV 02, which is a modification to the Wild Tennis Academy Phase 1 and Phase 2. The recommendation is that it be continued to a date certain, which is February 4th, 2015. I'll need a motion to carry this through.
I'll make a motion that we continue design review permit, DRP 11-05 RV 02, a modification to the Wild Tennis Academy Phase 1 and Phase 2 until February 4th.
I'll second that. Commissioner Merk, second that. Roll call?
Lajowski.
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes. Our next item, which is design review permit, DRP 14-11, to demolish a shed and replace with a larger shed at 206 North Signal Street, accessory parcel number 021-0113-250. The general plan, land use designation, and zoning classification of the site is village mixed use. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The property owner at Signal Street LLC, and our applicant is Richard Wirek. Let me hear from staff.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm sorry, I'm gonna sound really funky. Sorry, I'm sick. Before you tonight is a design review permit to allow the construction of an accessory storage building, as you said, at 206 North Signal Street. The property is comprised of three Spanish-style two-story buildings. They have multiple tenants occupy each building. The El Paso Plaza, as it is known, is approximately 13,000 square feet of multi-tenant office complex. The buildings are located around essentially located interior courtyard. Access is through Signal and Aliso Streets. The applicant has submitted an application for approval of the design review permit to construct a 217-square-foot accessory storage building located at 206 North Signal. This would replace the existing 60-square-foot storage building currently located on site. Staff reviewed the applicant's proposal and found it to be consistent with the zoning and general plan of the city of Ojai. We have placed the, I'm sorry, I'm really dead in my head tonight, so you'll have to bear with me. In the, your resolution for approval has the conditions of approval in it, and they're relatively few and simple. And just that they inaugurate this within one year. They need a building permit, and that where the existing shed is removed, landscaping shall be installed prior to final inspection of the new accessory storage building. All outdoor lighting shall comply with our new lighting standards here. And I'm not sure that, oh, the Title 24 and just our standard fire and legal requirements. So, you can see this is a relatively simple application before you, but it does require design review in front of the Planning Commission. So, with that, I guess I'm kind of gonna leave this kind of simple because, you know, it just is very simple. And with that, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Questions for staff, anything? Okay. Well, with no questions for staff, we can ask the applicant to come forward and hear from him. Mr. Wirek, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Richard Wirek. I'm a part-owner of that building along with our family, and I'm here to support that design review and approval. I'd like to mention that the reason we're doing this is because the old shed is a modified trash enclosure. It's not legal. It's too close to the property line. And in addition, there's a large transformer structure and an underground pole station next to it, so I really can't rebuild it there to be able to keep within the guidelines because it's too close to the property line, and there's no room on the side there. And anyway, this is about the only place I can do it. And I selected this location because it's kind of in the back and out of the way of any views from the street, and I decided to put the largest space in there I could because I always need storage, you know, for paint and for the gardener and for the janitorial service. And I use it for a little shop also. So, that's why it's so large. Anyway, the existing shed, I think I mentioned that the foundations failed and it's starting to tip over, so we gotta do something. I'd like to show some photos. Okay, this is how it looks now. And there's a small tree and some shrubs there on that circle. There used to be a big oak tree there, and it was taken out long before I owned the property. Oops. And this is how that shed will look. I'm trying to duplicate the angles on the roof that are already existing, as you can see, and have the materials all compatible with the existing building. And that was, by that way, that's a view from the parking lot. And if you look this way, there it is without the shed, and you can see the other shed on the other side of the driveway. And that's going out, of course. And then, this is how it's gonna look going in, and that's the view from Aliso. So, that's what you will see. And that's about it. It's pretty simple. It's gonna match the existing buildings and the rooftop, and I'm trying to get the angles on the roof the same. So, that's the idea on it. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Wirek? From the commissioners? No? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, and hopefully I can get approval. Thank you.
We're open for discussion amongst the, oh, I'm sorry. Was there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this project? Please feel free to come forward. I don't see anybody coming forward, so we will open it up. It is a public hearing, so we need a motion to close it.
You can do it yourself.
Oh, I think, oh, that's right. I gotta remember. Then I will close the public hearing. Did it for so many years the other way. Well, discussion. Anybody?
I mean, I think it looks good. It looks in harmony with the building and the surrounding area. I think it looks perfectly reasonable and acceptable.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's as visual as the other one, really. It's, isn't it, nothing to it.
I think we're all in agreement. It's fairly straightforward and simple in concept, and there's nothing standing out that raises any red flags. Well, if that be the case, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion that we approve design review permit, DRP 14-11, including the SEQA findings, accepting the SEQA categorical exemption for DRP 11, and approving DRP 14-11 subject to the conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Lajowski.
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Wirek. We're gonna move at this, forward at this time to our informational items, starting with the director report and director actions. Back to staff.
Okay. Majority of the director's actions during the month of November and December were to just approve signage and tree permits. And probably the only one of note would be director's exemption to replace an awning in a C1 zone, which is at 914 East Ojai Avenue. And that work has, I mean, it's been permitted, but it hasn't been done. But that will be to replace that big green awning that's up there at that, the tap room, I think it's called now. So, that. We'll move on to code enforcement, and it's a two-page code enforcement now, but you can see we have a lot of closed cases on it. And we're continuing to work on some of the ones that are pretty highlighted in the community. So, I'm open to any questions, if there's anything anybody has on the code enforcement. We continue to get them and close them and get them. It's kind of a revolving door. So, like you say, all the shaded ones are closed cases. And finally, the future agenda items. And just wanna highlight this to you, that you have a lot of meetings this month, a special meeting on January 13th. That's with them, is that at 7:00 or 6:00?
7:00.
At 7:00. And then, January 20th, the city manager wanted to make sure that you all knew that you were supposed to be attending the telecommunications meeting at the Boyd Center. You know, obviously, a change in the ordinance will come to the Planning Commission first. You know, there's been a lot of work with the city council, and our special counsel is working on it, but it does actually come to you first. So, it's imperative that you go to that meeting on January 20th.
Rhonda wants to know.
Okay, so...
At the Boyd Center?
Mm-hmm. Right. We've had the meeting already with the industry. We had that one already. And so, you know, the new FCC rules are coming out. They're supposed to be published tomorrow. So, this is why this is all now moving forward at this point in time because, you know, it's like everything else. Wait, 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 to hurry, 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 right? So, now that they've been published, we need to get this done so that there's a window between when they publish and when they become effective. And that's when we want our new ordinance to fall in between that window. So, we had to wait till they were published so we know what to address. I mean, they kind of know already. Sometimes there's minor changes between when they come out and when they're published. So, you know, it'll be another one of those kind of, like I said, hurry up.
So, this is more than informational. We hope to have a recommendation made or a motion?
Oh, no, no. This is informational on the 20th. It's one of the required workshops that we're gonna have with the public. But it'll be moving forward, you know, to Planning Commission. So, they just want you there so that you're hearing what people in the public have to say.
I see.
You know, just...
Almost a workshop?
Yeah.
Format? Okay?
Mm-hmm. And so, then we have the 21st, which I guess is the next day. And I think, are we having all those things? The hospital's not going, huh?
No, neither. The area's still open.
So, we'll just have Fox Street. We're trying, the hospital has a concept review coming before you for the change in the skilled nursing facility, you know. I think you guys knew when they did the hospital remodel, that would be the next step. And, you know, again, we're trying to accommodate their schedule. You know, they operate on budget year, it's kind of like we do. And they're funded for this, and so, we wanna assist them in getting this to you quickly. But there's just, you know, a couple fine-tuning things we have to get work with them so that when they get it before you, it's really, has enough information that you can actually give them suggestions. This is concept review, but it will be going forward. And then, when it actually, will probably move through this year rather quickly, but it will have to have a pretty extensive environmental document that goes with it. As you know, they're talking about leaving the one in place that's there currently now that has clients in it, building in the parking lot, adding a new road back through that area, and some different things. Yeah. So, you can be looking forward to that coming rather totally quickly. And then, as you know, the Wild Tennis Academy will, we've continued it to that date, and we've been working, there continues to be interest from the neighbors and the public on that particular project. And I'm open for any other questions you might have on future agenda items.
I just noticed for the first time that on this, my name was included in the MAC meeting as a liaison.
Oh, that's the upcoming...
Right, on the 19th of January.
Is that what it is?
So, I was just wondering, is that my notification? Is that what I get there, or do I get some kind of...
They email us an agenda the week before, and we forward it to the...
To whoever the liaison...
The commissioner who's in Intura.
Okay, so I have meetings the 19th, the 20th, and the 21st.
That's correct.
Pretty much.
Got you.
Aren't you lucky?
Don't forget the 13th.
Well, yeah, that gives me a break, but those are three nights in a row.
What is that meeting with the city council? What is that?
Should be, oh...
Every year, the city council meets with a commission, joint meeting with the commission to discuss anything you have concern with, and we probably should put that as an agenda
This would be a really good thing to have an admin process for, where it's publicly noticed, the public knows what's going on, it's not a director's exemption without public notice. But, you know, I think we could have handled this at staff level pretty easily, and I think, I think it was you, but I, so I think those are kind of things that I remember. So those might be the kind of things you might want to decide, and I'm sorry, I mean, if I didn't remember all of them, but I think those are the ones that.
That's all important.
Now, will some of these get covered with the neighborhood planning, such as, say, fence height, or the wall height, or second unit? Or do we just need maybe to reiterate that we want to make sure that it gets handled, whether it goes through that process or something?
I think you just need to decide whether it's something that, that there are some issues, neighborhood planning is a long process, you know, that's that's a fact finding, and then procedural kind of multi-phase project. If there's something that you think isn't working now for the community and you want to work on, like, I know that, I think I'll be bringing forward admin processes at any point, anyway. Because I think that the public has spoken, they don't want the director's exemptions, and there's concerns about, you know, noticing and making sure, most communities has, well, I shouldn't say most. Communities where I've worked have had this before, I don't think it's really common, but I've always worked in communities that have had it, where, you know, you just, you post the property and you notice it, and then, you know, you find out if there's, if there's neighborhood opposition, then you can elevate it back up to the planning commission. You know, you always have that flexibility. So I think that will be coming forward anyhow, but, but, you know, these are the things you just need to bring up to their attention, so that, like I said, it's really, early in the year, I think, is done, so they have, one, money allocation, and time allocation of staffs.
I think a priority, I mean, you first mentioned it, was the second dwelling unit. We worked out the non-compliant second dwelling unit, and it just seems logical to follow, continue that process with the, you know, the normal standard ordinance for second dwelling units. And talk about square footages and whatever else enters the discussion.
And I think there was another, I think there was also some concern about changing the design view guidelines for single-family homes. I think you brought that up, I think you might have. I don't know, that, like, for instance, the Fisher House, how, you know, the guidelines don't want you to have a box. I mean, they really actually asked you not to do that, you know, what he did. And so I don't know if you wanted to have different design guidelines, or, because, you know, when we're reviewing that, we're reviewing to what's in the code. And the examples are not what he had, so, you know, that's another one I think that came up.
It makes for an interesting discussion. I mean, I think we, I mean, personally, I like having the flexibility to make the call based on the individual case, rather than group everything under one heading. I think that's where we go awry. But, I mean, it's certainly worth discussion, don't you think, Commissioner Merk?
I'd like to stay out of the design review process for residential, I mean, that's always, you know, until this problem with two-story units came up, we really didn't ever look at single-family.
The code now requires design review for single-story, if you're over twenty-four feet.
Yeah.
Now, too, so you'll have it more often. I mean, if somebody does something that's elevated, you know, or has something, you know, I don't know what. But, so that's just my suggestions, and however you guys want to work it.
Anything to add?
Again, do we submit that now, right this, at this moment, or is this? Okay.
I think we're taking notes as.
So do we have a list going then?
Well, I think it's also important that you guys have this in your head, and you think about things that you want to talk about, because I think, I think it must be kind of more on informal meaning. And then you just want to be able to say, these are some of the things that have come up and that don't work. You know, and.
One of the things I would like to just make sure is discussed is the fact that, how we're moving forward with our neighborhood planning, and that we're making giant leaps in the right direction. It's taken years just to get to the point of where now we have selected, you know, a planner, David Sargent's firm, and we're going to be moving forward with that, and I think that's worthy of just, you know, acknowledging and some discussion.
I think we're also going to be moving forward with the pedestrian bike plan, too, at the same time.
The what plan? I'm sorry.
Pedestrian bike plan.
Right.
Yeah, and one thing I wanted to mention about that, because we had discussed that in Complete Streets today. And this had come up through Planning Commission, but rather than having it be a pedestrian bike plan, that it would be that information incorporated into the Complete Streets implementation plan. So maybe that's just semantics, you know, a different name, but I just wanted to share that information.
Are we good? Yeah, okay. I think we're at the point where we're talking about Planning Commission Subcommittee reports. We actually had a Complete Streets meeting today. So Kathy, would you like to?
Yes. We did meet today, and I always like to announce that we're open to the public. We meet the first Wednesday of the month here at City Hall from two-thirty to four-thirty. And as far as the reports go, actually Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, had put on two public workshops, one in December and actually one last night. And it was about Complete Streets, and several of our committee members attended one or both of the meetings. And I just wanted to say, I felt like it was very positive, I mean, we got, you know, all types of input from the public, but the fact that we had the meeting and they were allowed to come, I just think was really important. You know, to, even if the feedback was, you know, each end of the spectrum, the fact that people could come in voice and be part of the process, it was really, really good and important. And then one other thing I wanted to bring up, because it's the beginning of the new year, I know we're allowed to have three planning commissioners on the subcommittee. And Lawrence, I wanted to ask you, if you wanted to stay on, I know it's kind of an awkward time, especially when we're working, to come at two-thirty, you know, in the afternoon. If you still wanted to be on, or if not, I know Chester had actually expressed interest, so. Do you want to stay on?
I would like to stay on, but maybe if I can't, you know, ten one, maybe we could alternate.
We do an alternate?
Can you do an alternate?
Okay, I mean, are you still interested? I know we had briefly just discussed it, but I just wanted to open it up, because I appreciate everyone's, you know, feedback and participation and what have you. Okay, so I'll, if it's okay with you, I'll add you to the list. So basically, the two of you are going to have to, or you can let me know if you can make it or not. Yeah, well, Stephen can't make it.
Well, you know, likewise, I can be, whatever.
Okay, as long as that's, we're still in compliance with the Brown Act, and great. Get more information. And then, I did have a question. I noticed our landscape ordinance keeps getting moved from the gin, and I wasn't sure if you needed anything else from the committee or not, or if that was.
I might, I might, it's been a rough month. I think it's just, I got to get back on it and get it wrapped up. I mean, as you know, December, just with the holidays and everything, was just kind of, but yes.
It was just more an inquiry, because I keep noticing every month it gets changed, so that maybe there was some missing.
Well, we've gone through personnel change, too, so I think we're kind of up to speed now. That took a while to get it to where people are performing, you know, this is a new city for them, so it takes a while for them to learn all the ins and outs.
Absolutely. Oh, and just one other thing I wanted to add about Complete Streets. It's really exciting, we have several projects that the city's actually gotten grants for that are in process right now. And so that's what those two public workshops were about, to engage the public in, for input. But it's just very positive that things are actually happening. And I just wanted to thank everyone on the Complete Streets for participating. Thank you.
Kathy, can you update us on what's happening in terms of staff help, and how are we operating these days on the planning level?
So I have a contract firm that I'm working with that provide, has provided me with two different planners. One, Anna, who did the staff report for tonight's meeting. And Diana Gould, who has been helping me with HPC, the store preservation, specifically the Nef Lounge, that type of thing. So it's been working out pretty well. Diana has a lot of, I think both of them have a lot of experience, but Diana has upper level, she was a planning manager for City of Grover Beach up there, and now lives down here. So it's been working out pretty good, but, you know, we've had a lot of, a lot of hours put in over, so, yeah, and we have a job call that will be going out. I thought it'd already gone out, but I understand now from Mr. Meeve McClary that it hadn't. And for an actual city employee, that will be, I think it's thirty hours, thirty hours a week for assistant planner, what Heather was before. So we have, you know, salary savings from her position, and then, you know, we kind of, with the contract planners, we, you know, we work off trust funds most of the time with projects we assign to them, and so they're paid out of the trust fund that the applicant submits. So it's working pretty well right now.
How's it going on the building and safety level, in terms of inspectors, is it? I don't know, is it primarily Steve Stewart?
We're having interviews next week for the code compliance officer.
Code compliance, okay.
That was funded through the city council. And right now, we're with the, in doing the extensive remodel that they're doing, the inspectors are out there, kind of almost twenty-four hours. I don't know if it's twenty-four, but they're working continuously, and so we're, our inspectors are out there. Primarily, early on for the demo, to oversee the demo, and then, so there's three inspectors right now, Steve Stewart, Larry Beam, and then, I don't know Ron's last name, but he's brought in another, oh, Tindal, brought in another inspector, so we can keep everything going that's, would be, would be normal for the city, and then also the.
Is this primarily for the inn?
Uh-huh. Right, because they're, they're working, you know, into the night. So, you know, when they need to call for an inspection, but of course, they pay for that, I mean, it's part of their trust fund that's deposited. So right now, we have a lot of activity going on. But we'll be going out soon for an RFP for, you know, building and, building and plan checked and code enforcement. All as a, you know, to get, to get proposals from people going out for RFP. So that's kind of, I mean, everything just.
An overview.
Yeah.
I know it's been under, changes have been going on, I was just not sure exactly where.
I think the public's anxious to get the code enforcement officer hired and get somebody out there, they'll be out there in the weekends.
Right. Okay. Our city council liaison, council member Randy Haney is here this evening, I think. I'd like to have him come forward. Congratulations, Randy, on your.
Thank you. I know it's interesting standing here, but your work is a lot of work, and I'm finding out my work, my work is a lot of work, too, for each of our jobs. I just, I had a couple of things I just wanted to address. You know the meeting, the joint session, just if you guys haven't been in one, it's one hour. And so when you put together your agenda, I remember from the Wreckin' Parks Commission, you've got seven people, so you might have seven ideas, but the reality is you've got one hour. So when you guys look at that and you're there, think about how you can present something, or a couple of things, in a short space, or just thinking that, that's how we had to do it, because we came up with a list one time about twenty things we wanted to talk about. And an hour goes, you guys know that, an hour goes in five minutes, so. The second thing is posting minutes, I just was, that's been a big concern about how we're not posting our minutes from all these, from the planning, from the city council, and this is probably more to Kathleen, just hopefully we can expedite that, or figure out how to get the minutes posted in a timely manner for the planning session, and it's just something that's going to keep coming up.
Right, and so, you know, I've been asked this a number of times, and I just want to explain that my staff forwards it to the city clerk, it's her job to post them, so, you know, I think Rob's taking care of that, he supervises the city clerk, so.
All right, well, at least it's addressed here amongst us all. The other thing is, you know, we pull, I pull permits in a lot of cities, and when you pull a permit, they give you a placard and you have to post it. So that anyone driving by seeing something being constructed on a property has a permit placard and a number. Do we do that here? I was just wondering, because I haven't really, I haven't really seen one.
Not so much, I know what you're talking about, Randy, because I deal with the same thing, and I would say no. We have building inspection cards that are signed up, but he's speaking of more of like a public notice placard that goes, that tells you what the permit number is, and who the developer is, or whatever.
More importantly, it just says that, for us, the City of Ohio, this project has been permitted. And that just removes a lot of issues, because I'm just gonna, I'm gonna address a couple sites that we have and just give you some updates on that. But, but part of, part of these issues might have been resolved if we had a placard system, and someone could have said, hey, they're doing this, yet there's nothing posted. So I think that's all I have regarding that, but, so I just wanted to give you an update. We're all familiar with the Quell Oaks issue and project. Do I need to give you an address? But I'll just give you a Quell Oaks update, how about this? Five-nine-nine Quell Oak Drive, the DSS meeting. So the Department of Social Services is meeting with citizens in that area. It's going to be on January fourteenth, Wednesday, I believe, at six o'clock. So if you guys are interested in being a part of that, you might want to go to it.
Do you guys not know about that?
We don't know about it, because our code enforcement doesn't have addresses, we don't disclose that, code enforcement issues.
Okay, well, it's not necessarily a code enforcement issue right now, what it is, is it's a gathering of the client and the people that live in the area, and they're just going to have a meet and discuss what's going on and how they can resolve some of their concerns. So if I blew that, I'm sorry, I won't do it again.
So the five-ninety-nine is the group home, it's a group home for six and less, under seventeen, and there's been neighborhood concerns about the group home. Part of the licensing of a group home is, you know, is outreach within the neighborhood, so Department of Social Services has already given them a provisional license. And so they're going to have this meeting with the neighborhood to kind of just discuss how the, how the home works, and operates, and who's there, and, you know, it's kind of a educate the public on what they do and what they don't do, that type of thing.
Where is that?
In eating. It's also, they were, they started construction on doing some modifications of the facility or of the house, and they got ahead of the permitting process. So again, everyone's taking a step back, everyone's working together to resolve this, if I'm correct, Kathleen. And I'm just saying that they're having a meeting, I just wanted to bring that up, if any of you wanted to.
Is the meeting at the home?
Where is it?
It is at the home.
Five-nine-nine Quell Oak.
Okay, so one of the issues is they had put a wrought iron fence up, and they put the fence up under the drip line of an oak tree, and the, I think it was in the setback, so the wrought iron fence is coming down as of yesterday. And there was a big issue with the number of cars that they've had coming to the property, and they've resolved that, they're carpooling now. So there's a lot of small issues that the neighbors were concerned with, again, I just, I just wanted to bring it to your attention as, as planners. The second thing is, Kathleen touched on the Ohio Valley Inn. It, demolition permits have been issued, and demolition's underway, protected trees have been marked and fenced under the supervision of an arborist. The skin has been removed on the Nef Lounge portion, and there's been a slight adjustment to the steel beam. The beam should have, should have arrived today, and it's going to be installed hopefully this week. The demolition portion of the Morvella part is in progress, and the trees that were going to be removed in the pool area have been removed, and the pool is actually almost, the pool area is almost demolished. So they're moving quickly like they said they would within that ten-day period, so we're pretty happy with that. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was the theater. The foundation long signal is almost being completed, and the bracing's getting ready to be removed, so that'll kind of hopefully mitigate all of that. What is it, that, all the barricading and all of that, and all of that, narrowing of that street by the post office, which is, which is kind of a nightmare to drive down by. And it looks like there's some engineering problems with the foundation, but they're working on that between the theater and Jester. And then tenant improvements will obviously commence as soon as the foundation issues are taken care of. So I don't know if this is things that you guys need to hear or want to hear. So I don't know if this is things that, um, you guys need to hear or want to hear. Um, if you don't, you can cut me off next time. I just thought it's information that, um, as commissions for the planning department that you'd like to hear. Okay, and with that, I'd like to say, thank you, and, um, I look forward to, um, being a part of this commission and learning a heck of a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any more discussion on any items, and, uh, we'd like to raise it this time, or, do we want to send Kathleen home to bed?
Yeah, she's waiting.
Okay, this meeting's dismissed.